As soon as TC Media starts, we will begin. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, March 7th, 2023 Tom Otter City Council meeting. And first, we will start with roll call.
Councilmember Leona Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am present. Michael, Councilmember Althouser will start us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is we have special items, and I'm really excited about this special item. We get to meet our K-9 Thor, and I will turn it over to Chief Wicks.
Thank you, Mayor Solomon, council members. It is my pleasure for the first, or only the second time in our 18-year program history, we have our second handler, this Officer Chase Grimmett and K-9 Thor. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to him. He's going to talk to you a little bit about his training that he just went through and what the 2023 transition goals are. So Officer Grimmett.
All right, not great with microphones, so if I need to slow down or speak up, please just let me know. So for starters, I'm Chase, both Police Department for a little over four years now. And I've been part of the K-9 program for about three and a half. A lot of that has been doing helper work for Officer Mize and his partner, James, laying tracks, doing bite work, hiding stuff for them to find. In July, the department decided as we transitioned, Russ and James are nearing the end of their careers with us, unfortunately. But the K-9 program was something that we feel really strongly about here in the department. It's something that we, as a really small agency, have made a really big name for ourselves, both locally and then in the state. And it's something that trying to take a lot of pride in moving forward and kind of carry that torch for us, for you guys, and for Russ and James and Otis, Russ is first dog. Now the important stuff, this is Thor. He turned two on the first of this month. He's a Belgian Malinois, we call him Mouse, because it's less words. Probably the second most common working dog compared to German Shepherds. Really similar to Shepherds. Basically, body style is more of like a sprinter as opposed to kind of the more all-around athlete that German Shepherds tend to be. He's impressing me right now with his restraint. He looks like he likes the TV, which is awesome. He's super excitable. He really loves people. But, yeah, trying to make sure we don't accidentally have a bathroom break. Really loves people, and so people move around. He likes introducing himself to new people. We've gotten to do a couple of community events. We got to speak to walk hops about a month ago, let him kind of get to see all that. He's, he's young, he's kind of getting used to it. That's not something that we really covered in training, but it's something that Russ and I both feel really important for the community, because they're a super adaptable tool. But one of the roles that they play that none of the other tools play, and I'm right here. One of the other roles that they can play that the other tools can't is that public relationship part. Most everyone in this room has had a dog, but has had a dog, has a dog, knows someone who has a dog, has a fond memory of the dog. There's, there's something that's to be said, all right? There's something that's to be said about having all sorts of people that can walk up to you and interact with you on that level, engage with you on that level. Training, when we started in September. Yeah, okay, okay. All right, we'll try this. Training was about 400 hours from start in September. It was about 10 to 12-week process, given some of the holidays, and we had a little bit of, um, he worked too hard to begin with, tweaked his little hip a little bit. Had to get that squared away. That's per the WAC standards in this state. So it training consists of, training consists of tracking, which is obviously the bread and butter, evidence search, radios, weapons, wallets, stuff that is left behind by folks. That's, yeah. Article search obedience, it's a huge part for us to have the control part, because we need to understand that gone are the days where we show up at a crime scene, we cut the dog loose, we say you're under arrest, and whatever happens, happens. So we got to have that control with them. And he's shown that he's very moldable to it. He's got his own opinion sometimes. I think the relationship building for us was what was the most difficult part, because he was not entirely convinced that I'm in charge. Sometimes I'm not convinced, depending on what we're doing, to be, to be fair. But let's see, training, tracking, apprehension work. I mean, there is, there is the dirty part of our job where sometimes people, after the opportunities they've been given to surrender and come peacefully, they don't. And it is an incredible tool that limits both the risk to the officers of putting themselves in a dangerous situation to try to get someone out of a building, out of whatever the environment may be. And also, to be honest, limits the risk to the subject as well, because some of our only tools to be able to get them out as people might have a lot higher risk of some serious injury than when compared to a dog bite. And so I know it's not always the common opinion, but the dog's not going to do anything other than bite them. We know that. Other than training portion, moving on for 2023, move forward, we would like to continue the department's record of maintaining a narcotics dog. Currently, we have the only drug dog in the county. Does a lot of work just a couple of weeks ago. Yeah. Just a couple of weeks ago, Officer Mize and James found, I don't want to quote the numbers, because I'll be wrong, but a few pounds and several thousand pills, working with our partners over at TNT. Drugs are still a presence in our communities. The rules about how we interact with them can change, they have changed, they will change, that's fine. But the dog's nose is not something that can easily be substituted for. And for me personally, having agencies from as far north as Lakewood calling for your dog to assist is great. It helps us build those relationships, it helps us still feel like we're doing something in order to kind of help our communities as we struggle with this. So typically, we'll start that after year two or three. But wait for the dog to mature a little bit. We're still really young, we're a very rookie team. So we're still kind of finding those lightbulb moments, right? When we find the guy, when we find a thing, we've been trained on it, now we're polishing. So we don't want to confuse it too much for him. That is a personal goal of mine, I know Officer Mize, the department's been behind that so far. Moving forward, we would like to also, with those community events, to you guys, I know you guys have your own personal projects, passions in the community and stuff like that. If there's anything that you want a police dog to show up at and hand out stickers and take pictures with the people, please let us know. I mean, that, that is a really easy part of our job that is super fun, and it makes some of the hard parts go by a lot better. Plus, I work nights, and I'm never going to see real people ever, unless you guys invite me to some of these things. And it's good for him to be able to tell that there's more than just one type of person that we're dealing with, or two, if you count, you know, officers. Hopefully, we can get him for a long while, he's pretty young. That's what I forgot. He was a pet, we'll circle back to how we got him. He lived in an apartment in Illinois. He was loved and cared for. Unfortunately, the owner was not able to take care of him, I'm sure you can imagine why. Because he's not a pet. The drives in these dogs typically the way that we, so like right now, I mean, you guys can see he's, everyone that I'm not looking at, he's making sure that he's looking at, trying to figure out what groups everyone is in. He was surrendered to an organization that got in contact with a local agency called West Coast Police K-9. There are civilian dog breeders, trainers that have decades of experience with working dogs. And that is who we, after a pretty heavy selection test, we didn't go out looking for a Malinois. We didn't go out and say Thor, but let's see what that dog looks like, it's a cool name. That's the name he got when he came to us. And out of all the dogs that we tested, he's the one who performed to our department's standards. And so we felt he would best represent us moving forward. Other than that, I could kind of go on about K-9 stuff. Big thing, if people have questions or specific things for, I mean, me or Thor regarding the K-9 program, be happy to answer them. If anyone wants to meet him or hang out, please, we'll go outside, the way we're not taking up the meeting and everything like that. You guys want to actually get a little closer and talk to him or do whatever, he is a dog. He's just, like I said, he's not a pet. He's something more and different, which can be difficult at times. It's definitely been a trial for me to get used to. Most commonly asked question is, does he come home with me? Yes, he has not gotten away from me since September 26th. This was our first day, and we've been stuck together ever since. So yeah, thanks for having us here, we're happy to be here.
And while he's walking him around, what Officer Grimmett was talking about, this is a true commitment. To become a K-9 officer is a 24/7 job. They live with them, and they're with them all the time. We're lucky enough, like Officer Grimmett said, and to have a master handler that in Officer Russ Mize, who's going to continue to work with Chase throughout the year and transition to where they will be our only team. So do you have any questions for Chase?
Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks. I guess I'm just sort of curious, with the potency of narcotics increasing with fentanyl in, in recent years, you know, volume is lower in terms of trade in order to move a product that has even more devastating and horrible effects. Does that sort of impact the strategy on narcotics dogs? Like if, if there's less quantity, I would imagine it's more difficult to detect.
I think in theory, and I'll try to speak up, I think in theory, yes. However, we're talking about trace level amounts that a dog's nose is picking up, that it could be, I picked it up this morning and put it away and washed my hands, and the dog hit it on it. My best example I can give to people is, you go home after a long day and you've had beef stew cooking, right? You walk in the house, you go, all right, beef stew. Dog comes in and goes, okay, that's a teaspoon of garlic salt, there's six carrots in there, I can smell beef, I can smell broth, I can smell what? Those are walla wallas, pretty good choice. I mean, they, it is a magnificent thing. It is something that still cannot be replicated by machines, they try. There are dogs that smell a particular plastic that is used in SD cards that are only used in bombs. So these dogs are picking up incredibly, incredibly low amounts of stuff. With fentanyl in particular, because that's the way we are going here for the next block of years regarding narcotics. California in particular has been really aggressive on trying to figure out how to imprint that. That's what the dog knows, is that you can imprint them on anything. And so I, I would say it's pretty safe. At some point, fentanyl will be in, being added to the routines of the company. We'll see, it will be regional. I mean, there are still marijuana dogs that work for fets, right? Like here in Washington, they don't know that, that ended a lot of it. Their adaptability was such a, like, they have both as a nose and with their ability to, like, I think is what makes them sort of stay around.
As you can see, he has a problem with energy.
So I just have to say, when I found out we were getting a Malinois, I went, oh my God, we have got to have the youngest officer possible, because that's the only one who's going to be able to keep up with them. Oh, my goodness, they are, that's a lot of dog. I don't know if there's a fence built that they can't get over and. Oh, my goodness. Any other, oh, I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson, then Councilmember Snyder.
Yes, I've been reading about Shrank Horse Tranquilizer, and they're in all 50 states now. So can his nose smell it? Is he trained in it?
Irregularly, sure. He has not been imprinted on any sense right now. So he is strictly able to consider a controlled, they're almost dog. He's been trained for items with suspect scent, he's been trained for the suspects. A lot of it is, seems complicated, but it's really a game for teaching them, which, you know, hey, we're looking for carrots in this beef stew smell right now, and off we go.
Okay.
They find a wall that smells like carrots, that's how we know. I, I'm hoping that by the time we come to the corporate row, it's time to check in for narcotics and see how we do. Those have been fine so far, there's no reason we can't imprint them. I guess there's always a chance that you can be able to. Hopefully, when it comes that time, that we've got a tried and true fentanyl imprinting system, because, I mean, we all know that's, that that's where it's at. As far as for the prevention and seeing.
Hey, Mayor, before Councilmember Snyder asks this question, could you have Chase, like, lean towards the microphone? Because I can't hear any of his answers.
All right. Perfect, thank you for letting us know.
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Snyder, and then I'll go to Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, so thank you, Officer. Seeing you with your dog reminds me when I got my, we got Simba, he was a rescue dog 11 years ago. And we went through a training class for six months, and it was with German Shepherds. He's not a German Shepherd, but the only German word we learned through that whole six months was Plats. So I appreciate hearing that, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Swarthout.
Um, how old is he?
He turned two on March 1st, roughly. Given circumstances of his background, we don't actually like, you know, have like a crazy pedigree paperwork from Czechoslovakia saying that six generations back and all this, he is just a Malinois that works really hard to his own detriment at times. That's kind of why I'm here.
What's he like at home, then, does he?
He's like this at home. Sometimes I like to think that he needs a break from me, but that's not really where we're at. I truly need a break from him sometimes, just for our own sanity. Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Althouser.
So, so what, what is the protocol for, I don't know if respite is the right word for you, but you know, where, where you need to take a vacation or?
Sure.
What have you in the first year, first couple of years, what does that look like?
So typically, so typically, I'm fortunate enough that there's another handler in this department, Russ and his wife Patty, some of you may know, have no problem taking care of him for sure. We've been trying to break that habit for a while. So that would be first goal, somebody he knows, somebody he's familiar with. Russ has gotten to spend, other than me, probably the most time with him, and, and the trainer that we spent our first 400 hours with. Thankfully, West Coast Police K-9 Services, make sure I'm getting all right. They're down in the Rochester, Tenino area, they also have a boarding facility. And other than Russ, there's really no one else I would rather trust Thor with, or trust our investment with. I mean, he knows the dog and knows these kinds of dogs. So I don't have to worry about dropping him off at a random boarding facility and be like, hey, by the way, don't touch his, you know, backside. Don't sneeze behind him, or, you know, like, like that kind of stuff. It's dogs like this, they have such a, the, the dogs that we select for this work, we need them to be goofy, friendly with people, right? But they also have to have that switch when it's dark and they're being opposed, and somebody unfortunately is hurting them. And it's our job to make sure that that switch gets flipped properly and not randomly or because of our negligence in the environment. And so that's where you hear about some of the negative stories, unfortunately. I think it always travels up the leash, and it's, the dog does what the dog's been trained to do and what his little dog brain is able to comprehend. It's ultimately, it's always on us. So that's a big thing for us at this department, is we, the handler has the ultimate ownership in the failures of the team. So that's something I take very seriously, at least, and the rest does too.
The other thing, Councilmember Althousers, we also do budget for boarding. And so if for us isn't available, or with Russ and, and K-9 James, we'll board him.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. How wonderful to have you here and see you with the dog. And it makes me want to ask you, have you always been a dog person? Have you always had dogs as a pet? And, you know, how is this, it seems to me like this dog kind of touches your heart.
Yeah, he touches something.
I want to believe for his sake, it's his heart.
Um, I think people that know me would probably say, yeah, I've been a dog person. I, I don't give it that way, but yet everywhere I go, I end up here. I was a week off of FTO for a week, and all of a sudden, I was wearing a bike suit for Russ and James. And then from then on, we basically just had a standing date that that's what I was doing with my free time. It just kind of happened. I never got into this job trying to be K-9. That wasn't, that wasn't, I just wanted to work the road and be a police officer and figure it out in five-year chunks, to be responsible about it. I have always been around a lot of animals, I think, and that definitely is part of it. We always had bird dogs growing up. It's not the same, but there are very, there are foundational similarities with that type of nose-driven work and kind of learning the game, I think, that definitely helped me in the training part of it.
Well, thank you, I, I really appreciate you and Thor and the work that you're doing and how it fits in with our department. And, you know, we love to be known for good things, and I think you and Thor are a good team, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thanks, Mayor. Chase, I was just wondering, is the reason why you work nights because the majority of your calls with Thor will be at nights, or?
Yeah, so that is kind of the prevailing narrative about that. And I would say more in-progress violent crimes typically occur during a certain period. And typically, those are periods of darkness, which happens, or however, we are available on a call-out basis. So I mean, there's been plenty of shifts already, sorry, where I've gotten off work at three or four in the morning, and then comes six or seven in the morning, I'm getting a call because, you know, we had a robbery at a gas station and stuff like that. I would say part of it is too, is most of the crimes that we are tracking for, we're not tracking for shoplifts and broken windows and, you know, people blocking the roadways, running from collisions, that's not what we're doing. And that is typically the type of call volume that you will see during the daytime. More property crimes, more crimes against society, because Washington and the Police Department for, I mean, 16 years has had such a high standard of, look, we, we can put a dog out to find evidence, we can put a dog out to find people, but we are not putting a dog out to bite people over property crimes. Most of the people crimes, violent crimes, the domestic violences, crimes involving weapons where you need every tool you can. Those typically happen at night. If it ever came to the point where hopefully we got a second dog, and we could either split nights or keep the same schedule and have one on day. There's six teams, six dog teams right now in Thurston County, counting all the agencies. I think that there is an opportunity, for one, maybe just one, if they work day shift. The problem is, is people have been working day shift for so long, they're used to there not being a dog. And ultimately, just because we're available isn't going to change the type of crimes that are occurring at that time. So right now, yes, typically, the, they use the word doggable. I use the word deployable in the reports. Nighttime is typically that best window to maximize our availability, not just to our city, but a lot of times Olympia, Lacey, rural residents of Thurston County, Mason County sometimes. The dog works for everyone, doesn't really care, just how long the drive is to get out there sometimes. So we'll probably be on nights for a while.
Chase, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you explaining the gradations of Thor engagement, so thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Solomon.
And again, I am very happy we got this new dog, and we can keep our K-9 program. And that's a lot of dog to manage. All right. Next item is proclamation for Women's History Month, and I will go ahead and I will read this proclamation. And I want to make mention that I have Pam DeRof from the Zonta Club that I will be presenting this to when I'm done. So proclamation, whereas the city of Tom Otter strives to promote a strong and inclusive community that recognizes, celebrates efforts to bring people together for greater good, and I should have brought my reading glasses, and highlight many threads in our fabric that make a strong and whole. And whereas International Women's Day is celebrated globally on March 8th by those who believe in gender equality and who seek to improve the lives of, of all women throughout the culture, legal, economic, and social change. And whereas in 1987 and each year since, Congress has passed a resolution recognizing March as National Women's History Month. Women of every race, class, ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation and have served in our country courageously in the military. And whereas women are critical to the economic and cultural and social role in every sphere of life by consuming a significant portion of labor force, working inside and outside the home. Women have served as leaders of the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal, equal opportunity, but also in the abolish, in abolishment, sorry, emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, peace movement, which create a far more fair and just society for all. And whereas National Women's History Month Alliance designates a yearly theme of women's history, the 2023 theme is celebrating women who tell their, our story and recognizing women past and present who have by, who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. Now therefore, I, Debbie Sullivan, the first woman mayor of the city of Tom Otter, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as National Women's History Month, and I urge the people to take action, actions against gender bias and inequities and join me in recognizing women's contribution and culture to history and society. And I will go ahead and present this. There you go, thank you. And we also do a small gift. You're welcome, so go. Thank you.
Since it is History Month, I thought I'd give a little background of our local Zonta Club. And I'd also like to recognize our members, Leona Dahlhoff and Angela Jefferson and Paige Porter. The Zonta International was founded in 1919, and it's a global organization working together to advance the status of women worldwide through service and advocacy. With more than 30,000 members belonging to more than 1,200 Zonta Clubs in 63 countries and geographic areas, Zonta's functions all over the world volunteer their time, talents, and support to local and international service projects as well as scholarship programs aimed at fulfilling Zonta's mission and objectives. Zonta Club of Olympia was organized October 10th, 1928. As a new club, our first service project was Recreation Council. We promoted a swimming hole on the Deschutes River and provided transportation for girls and boys for swimming and picnics. To earn money to fund this project, we held a summer festival and style show in the lovely gardens of Peter G. Schmidt Estates. This year, our annual fundraiser is September 16th at the Olympian Hotel. It is a play about when the hotel was built, and it should be very interesting. Each Zonta, each of Zonta's international service projects and education programs aim to provide life-changing opportunities for women and girls to achieve gender equality worldwide. Our members also engage the local and national level in advocacy and awareness efforts focusing on ending gender-based violence, equal pay, closing the gender gap in male-dominated fields, and more. On International Women's Day, the Zonta Club will invite members of the community to join us in building a better world for women and girls. We are having a get-together at Uptown Grill on Thursday, March 9th, for anyone who is interested in learning more about Zonta. Thank you for supporting women.
Thank you very much for attending this evening. All right. With that, we will move to public comment portion, and I'll again check if there was anyone online registered.
There isn't.
There isn't. Okay, we have one person in council chambers, Michael Cade. If you could come to the podium, name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Cade, I'm the Executive Director of the Thurston Economic Development Council. Address of our office is 4220 Sixth Avenue Southeast in Lacey. My personal address is 3526 Holiday Drive in Olympia, actually right down the street. Thank you. I'm here to thank you for the resources that you folks have provided us to create a training program that we call BEST. And I just wanted to take just a couple of minutes to let you know that we'll be having our first launch of that curriculum. We'll start on Friday, this Friday afternoon. So if anybody's watching and you still have time to register, please do so through our website at thurstonedc.com. Talk a little bit about that program and really what it's intended to do. And if Mr. Don, if you could pass that down. One of the things that we like to do, as we've talked in the past, is economic development is about working with clients in a variety of different ways. The notion that we can build a strong entrepreneurial network. One of the programs that we've created was called BEST, Business Entrepreneur Startup Training. It's a five-week course. It's intended not necessarily for just startup businesses, but for young entrepreneurs and emerging entrepreneurs. It's a five-week course based on really the four basics of business, business development, business plan writing, structuring and licensing, businesses for startups, branding and marketing, and then weekly access to virtual Q and A as well as accounting and finance. The idea there is that the reality is that in Washington State, over 50% of business startups fail within the first five years. And you've all heard these statistics and I've heard everything from 70% to 75% have failed. What we like to do with these programs is to drive down that failure rate Thurston County. And we actually have seen a very significant success rate of our clients that go through this program. So urging Tom Water businesses to take advantage of this thing that you graciously provided resource for us to great scholarships for. One of the things that we like to do is that make sure that this program is designed for the client, not for us. And what I mean by that is that I, I don't teach the class, but our course providers and trainers do. They make sure that as the client leaves, they have access to all the resources of the entrepreneurial network. We've talked in the past about the things that we like to do. And right now we have about 50 different points of entry for different businesses and access. We want to make sure that, and I'm overwhelmed by those, but they have a knowledge base of how to take advantage of it and take advantage of the resources that we have at the organization. But the other thing is that we want to make sure they also walk out with something in their pocket, that there's a relationship they have with the other technical providers in Washington State and in Thurston County and in Tom Water Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Clubs, other marketing and, marketing and network clubs. We provide that all to them to make sure that when they leave these trainings, we don't just say, see you, good luck. Want to make sure that we, we hold on to them and they know that there's a network there for them to take advantage. So I wanted to let you know that that's happening this Friday. We need some more people to register. There's always room for one more. I grew up in a very large family and that was kind of the deal in our family. There was always room for one more. There's always room for one more. Thurstonedc.com, people can register and we'll get them. So if you have any questions, let me know and I will come back and tell you how it's going. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, councilmembers.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? I do not see anyone else in chamber that would be making public comment. So we're going to go to the consent calendar, but I do need to make one note. And so when we vote on the consent calendar, we did find there was a typo in number D, which is the interlocal agreement. It expired December 1st, 2022, not 2020. So when you make that motion, we need to make that with the correction of the year 2022. So is there any? All right, Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented with exception to item 6D with an amendment that that reflect an expiration date of 2022 as opposed to 2020.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next, and with that for the public, it is, we had the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of February 14th, approval of the city council minutes of February 21st, payment vouchers. Again, the interlocal agreement with the city of Olympia for fire vehicle repair and maintenance services, national opioid settlement allocation agreement, and I-5 Trosper Capital Boulevard Reconfiguration Project, construction road closure. And so all of those items were taken care of with that on the consent calendar. Next item is public hearing, and this is on resolution number R 2023-004, amending the six-year Transportation Improvement Program for 2023 to 2028. And Mary Heather is going to go ahead and present.
Yeah. Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Mary Heather Ames and I am transportation, the transportation manager for Tom Water. I have Meredith Greer from Greer Consulting here with me this evening. We are here tonight to provide information ahead of the public hearing regarding the amending our current TIP, which stands for Transportation Improvement Program, to add the Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal Project. I'm going to try to say that as many times as possible without messing it up. So. Thanks. First, let's review the tip process. I think you're familiar with this, but normally this is a yearly event and I come in May or June. And we were talking about the next six years. This case, we're doing an amendment, so it still requires the public hearing as part of the RCW that sets up this process. But this is an amendment to the one that is currently in place, so the 2023 to 2028. The information will be submitted through TRPC, the Thurston Regional Planning Council, to the state for inclusion on the state Transportation Improvement Program, which we also call the STIP, so Tip-Stip. We, we are amending the, as I said, the 2023 to 2028 tip, which was set forth by council in June of 2022. So after this, I will submit it to TRPC and, and take care of it. So. Thank you. So the reason that we're here is, as I said before, the Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal Project. And this has gotten some new funding. This is protect funding, which is a, a fun one, promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient, and cost-saving transportation. In Washington State, and Meredith will probably talk a little more about this, but in Washington State, this funding has been used to take care of fish passage barrier removal projects. And so we're one, am I ruining it if I tell them? We're, we're one of, we're the only city who's receiving this funding. All other agencies are counties that are receiving this. And that's because we have Meredith working on this. So pretty awesome. One of the requirements is that it needs to be listed on our, on our tip or TIP. So then we can add it to the STIP. So now Meredith will tell you about, about the project.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. As Mary Heather mentioned, my name is Meredith Greer. I'm on, I'm with Greer Environmental Consulting and I'm helping to provide project and grant management as part of this project. So this project had been identified on Tom Waters' capital improvement plan for probably about 20 years, back when it was the Public Works Department, when water resources and sustainability kind of turned into a new project that ended up falling into that category, being that this was mostly a project we were focusing on fish passage. The map we have up here on the PowerPoint shows the little star where Sap Road is. We're focusing on the area where Percival Creek runs under Sap Road. Right now, we have a pretty narrow roadway going over there. If you've ever driven over it, the lines are starting to kind of fall off on the side. There's no options for sidewalks, there's no bike lanes. Despite the fact that every time I've been out there, we've seen people walking their dogs. It's a pretty well-used area between two big housing developments. In addition, we also have the only culvert along the entire Percival Creek, which is a full fish passage barrier. Now, usually salmon want to be able to move from freshwater out to saltwater and return. And ideally, they'd be able to get to an entire stretch of creek. Right now, this culvert is blocking about a third of Percival Creek to that fish passage for anadromous fish, which is really important in this area, as we're trying to help restore those runs. So we kind of had a lot of things coming together to create a really cool opportunity for us to do a program and a project that had multiple benefits. So what we're hoping to do is replace the current culvert that's undersized. It's got too much velocity going through it for fish to get through with a 19-foot, four-sided box culvert. So much, much larger than what we currently have out there right now. This would also allow us to realign the stream a little bit, so it looks more natural. It flows the way it normally would. It's not confined by a culvert that's really shooting it through there too quickly, as well as help to install about five large woody structures. One of the cool elements of this project is just on to the north of the road is Sap Road Park. So it's about a 12-acre park that the city of Tom Water already owns. It's managed and restored by the city of Tom Water as well. We're able to use that area and really work to enhance everything about this project. Right now, we're at the 90% design stage and it looks a little bit something like this. So what we're doing is we're adding and increasing the size of the travel lanes to the 11-foot standard. We're putting six-foot bike lanes on either side of the road, as well as adding five-foot sidewalks. We also have that new 19-foot, four-sided box culvert, the realigned stream, as well as the large woody debris, which you can see in the plans right now. This has been a really exciting project that we've been working on for about a year now, but we're kind of coming to you with this pivot in direction because a new funding opportunity came up. We recently, we received some funding from a grant source, the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, to help us complete designs of this project. We're hoping to go for another salmon-related project for funding for construction. We recently found out in December that because of the bipartisan infrastructure bill, the Washington State Department of Transportation now has a new funding source called Protect. That allows a number of jurisdictions the opportunity to apply for funding for construction projects. The city of Tom Water was able to pivot pretty quickly and secure $2.1 million in funding, which covers all the construction costs associated with the project, allows us to bring together both this transportation project and this fish project into one. There are some requirements in order for us to get this protect funding. And all of this needs to happen by June of this year. One is that the show, the project needs to be shovel-ready. So we're working right now, we're doing the 90% design review, which the transportation engineering team just finished their comments on earlier this afternoon. We have 100% designs completed by June with the consultant we're working with, PBS. We also have to have our National Environmental Policy Act permit that has been completed. We are just waiting on signatures there. We need to have the right-of-way certified. We are working with a right-of-way firm on that. And the last element, and probably the most important to getting a couple of other things kicked off, is having the project added to the state Transportation Improvement Program, which is what we're here today to talk about.
This diagram is in your packet and it shows the amended or added project as it will show on our, on our tip. You can see the grant funding totaling $2.179,6 million in local funds in the amount of $240,400 for a total project cost of $2.42 million, which is pretty fantastic. And something that is exciting, although this is a fish passage barrier removal project, as Meredith mentioned, we're able to incorporate those transportation elements because of this grant funding and be able to get the sidewalks and bike lanes, which is really cool because I have driven there and seen definitely it's a location that gets use. So with that, that concludes our presentation. And we ask that you, following the public hearing, consider moving to have the mayor approve or to approve and have the mayor sign the resolution, R 2023004.
Great. Any questions before I open up the public hearing portions? Okay, with that, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Meredith, great work. This is, I appreciated your report. I wanted to ask two things. What, what do you mean or what does it look like? What, what is a woody structure?
Absolutely.
Two woody structures.
So it's a, it's a pretty fancy term for a big tree that we've put into the stream and anchored there. The idea being in a natural system where we'd have a riparian area with a lot of trees planted on either side of the stream. As the stream moved, those trees would fall in naturally. They help to create habitat. They're great places for fish to be able to hide. They are really, really important for the system. So as we're dealing with more urban systems, like the city of Tom Water growing up around Percival Creek, when we're thinking about putting in projects that are focused on fish, adding those habitat elements is a really good opportunity to be able to help kind of restore the creek. The fact that we have the Sap Road Park just north of where we're doing the culvert work allows us to have that opportunity to place some of these added elements, knowing that we're creating a really cool area that fish are now going to be coming to and going through. Adding these habitat elements is a really awesome part of the project. It helps to encourage and engage everybody in the creek and really helps to restore that area.
I love it. I absolutely love it. If anybody tells me they're planting trees, I celebrate. And I'd be happy to send you some kind of bonus. But I, I, as a person who grew up fishing in streams and so forth, that's what you're saying is just absolutely true. Having, having a, a tree and all it brings on banks and in streams is, is wonderful. So I'm, I'm very happy about that. The other thing was how, are there any things that you're going to be adding or changing or enhancing in any way of the park?
So this project is focused on the culvert and then some of the stream realignment further downstream, along with the large woody material. This project doesn't have any other added elements related to the park, but I know the Water Resources and Sustainability Team is working really hard. They recently hired Grant Gilmore, whose focus is on outreach, but also habitat restoration. And that's a priority for him to continue to restore the park. I know Water Resources and Sustainability Director Dan Smith, when he started as an intern, was working in the park and helping to restore this. This has been kind of a lifelong work and they continue to plan on doing work in that area, just not part of this project.
Good. Well, thanks for all of your work and Mary Heather's and everything. This is, this is a great project. Thank you.
Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you. So great work, Meredith, as always, and it's good to see you. So the question I do have, do we have an estimation of how many salmon actually pass through this area?
So that's a little bit tricky. We don't know right now. One of the things we did before going through the process of getting all the funding for fish passage was we wanted to figure out, are there fish using the system right now? So one of the things we worked with a local group called Wild Fish Conservancy and we sampled the water for EDNA. The idea being that the same way that your hair kind of falls out and you find things around your home, salmon and fish do the same thing within creeks. So we're able to go through and filter water and pull out and match, okay, we know there are fish here. The only problem with this kind of process is that we're able to say, yes, there are fish, but we don't know how many. I was out the other day with a representative from WDFW and we were looking in the creek a little bit further downstream and we were able to see nesting areas. So salmon create what they're called reds, where they lay their eggs. So there are a lot of fish in the system. We currently don't have anybody. And nobody from WDFW is counting the number of fish that are coming in the system. But a lot of this work is kind of regional work. So throughout the Deschutes watershed, there's a lot of momentum and focus on helping to restore salmon habitat. So we're hoping this project, along with the rest of the work that's being done throughout the watershed, does really encourage and engage and help to restore a lot of those salmon runs that had historically been here that need a little bit of help right now to adapt to all the changes that humans have made and the changes that are happening with climate change. So we're really hopeful that there are salmon in the system that are going to benefit. The more salmon we're able to benefit now, the more their children will benefit and run after run and generation after generation will be able to now use the entirety of Percival Creek.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, any other questions before I open up the public hearing portion? Councilmember Gobby.
Is this habitat predominantly for salmon actually? Or a better question would be either where they hatch and go out to sea and then come back to die? Is that what it is?
Yes, so salmon and kind of salmonids is like a group of salmon. There are five of them here along the west coast that will come and use this area. Their life histories have them be born in freshwater and they go through a process of smultification where they transition to going out into the ocean where there's a lot more food. They're able to get a lot bigger and then they return because they want to complete that cycle and they'll lay their eggs in these areas. Ultimately, a lot of the best habitat for laying eggs and for raising a lot of the young salmon is further up in watersheds where you get the right kind of gravel and sediment makeup. Right now in Percival Creek, the salmon are having to lay eggs in less than ideal areas because they're not able to get to the headwaters. because they're not able to get to the headwaters. And so what we're hoping to do, and what we've seen with WDFW, you'd have done some studies on the type of habitat that's upstream of the Sap Road culvert, and it's really, really good habitat. As we're hoping to be able to open that up and create these really good opportunities that will help increase the number of salmon that survive and are making it to adulthood and are able to return and continue that cycle.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions before I open the public hearing portion? Hey, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And do I have anyone signed up for comment? Anyone online?
No one online.
All right. No one signed up for public comments, so I'm now going to close the public comment portion of our public hearing. And now I'm going to turn on everyone's microphone. And is there any discussion on this, or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Councilmember Swarthup.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-four, amending the city's six-year transportation improvement program for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-eight, following the public hearing.
Now that was a raise. I am not sure.
And I second Angela Jefferson.
Okay, and seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you so much. Oh, Councilmember Swarthup.
Just want to thank you for your work and the fact that it says yes, fully funded under that. So congratulations. That's really quite a coup and a lot of work on your part, so thank you. Fully funded.
Great. Thank you. All right. With that, we are now to committee reports. First committee report is Public Health and Safety, and Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety will meet next Tuesday, March fourteen, eight AM. We will be hearing from Tom Water Hopes, getting an update, and we'll be doing round two of South Sound Behavioral Hospital update.
Great. Next is General Government Committee. Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. The General Government Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning, bright and early at eight AM. We have a packed agenda. We'll be discussing the Habitat for Humanity Townhomes in an agreement with the Department of Commerce about that project. We'll be talking about our street tree plan and getting an update on that. We'll be receiving a landscape code update. Then also talking about a grant with WDFW regarding the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan. We'll be getting an update about that, too.
Great. Next is Public Works Committee. Councilmember Swarthup.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. We have, the Public Works Committee will be meeting on Thursday, March ninth, at eight AM. And we'll be having, talking about the consultant agreement with Tierra Right-of-Way Services for right-of-way services on the X Street Roundabout Project. And we'll also be talking about the Barnes Lake twenty-twenty-three budget and work plan.
Great, thank you. And there was no Budget or Finance Committee meeting since our last meeting. So that moves us to City Mayor, City Administrator Report, and City Administrator Don, do you want to start?
I don't have.
You have nothing. Okay. So what I will do is I will give an update. I attended the Inner City Transit Authority Board meeting on March first. And probably the most important part of that is, everyone is probably seeing in the paper and in media, that General Manager Freeman Mazaneras is retiring. And we will be doing a search for a new general manager, and we have an interim manager. And there's been a few posts and things on the enormous amount of things she has contributed and has happened with Inner City Transit during the time that she has been the general manager and has done an amazing job with that, including trying to do a public transportation organization through COVID, which was not easy for anybody, but doing transportation was also very difficult. We are also doing, working on the signal priority system. They're doing some updates to, I think, believe it is in Olympia. And then there is, and actually, I think that happened today. So there was a rock, the youth education walk-in role open house was today from three-thirty to six. And that will be at the new location on Patterson Street. So if anybody has an opportunity, that's a great, that's a great program that moved up, that was moved from downtown now to the main facility on Patterson. And I think that was pretty much the highlights for that. I can't think of anything else at the moment. I've been doing a lot of the the state of the city and a lot of different organizations. And tomorrow I have one at, for the Rotary, Tom Water Rotary. And I think that's it on my report. So unless anyone has questions, so I am going to start. I will start in Zoom land. So Councilmember Dahlhoff, sorry. Are you, are you ready to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, in Zoom land with my flat tire in my garage. Otherwise, I would love to be with you tonight. I'm already done with the week, and it's only Tuesday. One of the exciting meetings I'd like to tell you about is Tom Water had our kickoff for the Equity Toolbox that we have been talking about for quite some time, right, of what that looks like for Tom Water with Demarche Consulting. And Angelie representing the council on those meetings. So super exciting to be able to move forward on that project. Expected ten to twelve months, and that toolbox will be for us, for staff, for the community, hopefully for the school district, open to everyone and anyone. So I'm excited about that. Also had TCOM nine-one-one. Elections were held for that board. And Lenny Greenstein with Lacey will remain chair, and I will remain vice chair. Sea level rise met. Elections were held there. Danny Madrome with Olympia will maintain chair, and Bob Ial with Port of Olympia will maintain vice chair. We got an update on the December twenty-twenty-two King Tide event that some of you might remember of the flooding of downtown. What was interesting is that was the worst flooding ever seen since nineteen-eighty-seven. The Bud Inlet, it rose, the tide came in at eighteen-point-four feet. That was one-point-seven-seven feet over the predicted tide. The record in nineteen-eighty-seven was seventeen-point-nine-nine feet. So we got an update regarding Olympia and Lot with updated catch basin covers. If you picture a large magnet going over the covers. And so they went about showing the response of Olympia and Lot, what that looks like, and after-action review, right, and really forecasting that these events will only increase and get worse. So what does that look like for the downtown area? And so we also received an update on the sea level rise collaborative work plan, which is online, which is super informative. And so if anyone wants additional information, I am happy to share. And then I just have some upcoming meetings this week and next week, and I'll give a report on those at our next council meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Let's see. I think I'll start with, I had a solid waste advisory council meeting since our last meeting. And we had a pretty lengthy meeting, and one of the things we talked about were all the bills that are in the legislature, which I don't know, Michael and Eileen know about some of these, but they're, they're related to environmental things and also to solid waste. And I just, I just wanted to run through not all thirteen in, you know, any detail, but I just wanted to say what some of the title-type things are. They're around recycling and composting and packaging. These are things we've talked about, you know, off and on over the years. And they're about plastic pollution, solid waste management outcomes, which is going to be a big one on how we handle our solid waste in Thurston County and our composting, and just the whole, the whole thing. And think, things about how we handle appliances and lighting materials and batteries and all kinds of things. All of these things ended up in, in bills in the legislature. And I'm really, and SWAC is really happy about that, that, you know, the attention is, is there and a lot of support for everything that has to do with this area composting garbage and also food waste and all of those things that we talk about. So hooray to the, to the legislature for taking this up and giving us a boost on it. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, which is really too bad, really too bad, is that the Dart, the Dart plant, the company, I don't know if you all know where it is, at the end of Israel Road, where you could, you know, recycle your styrofoam. Well, they, they closed and they've left town. So that option for the Tom Water community, surrounding Tom Water community to recycle their styrofoam is gone. And there is nowhere now in Thurston County. And so we're working on the possibility of finding someplace or some way or what we can do, because that's a, that's just a huge foul in the whole, you know, system. And we're also still working on citing some transfer station-type things, not just drop boxes, but larger, a couple, at least one larger facility in, in South County. And so those plans still continue. And we have restarted and re-upped our education and outreach, which some of us had been bemoaning that it kind of was lost in, in everything we're doing. So there will be, you'll be hearing and more about that and seeing, hopefully, more things that we can pass on to our constituents, use ourselves, and in, and in the schools. So that's a really, that's a really good thing. I have a couple of other things that I wanted to bring up. One of them is from two, were two council meetings ago, and I believe Administrator Don, and I, we talked about it online here. And so I would be happy to do that on council comments or wherever that is. And I also wanted to ask some questions about Safe Place. So these are not things that are about my report, but I would like to speak to them in this, in this meeting and be happy to do that at the end. I'm saying that, Mayor, because however anybody wants to handle it, tell me to, you know, now or later.
Do, so you want to do it in this meeting and not in a work session?
Correct, because I wanted to do it to a council member a meeting or so ago. And I wanted to talk about the consent agenda. The meeting was too long, so we put it off to this meeting.
All right. Why don't we do that under other business at the end?
Okay, that's great. That's fine.
Okay. I will go in council chambers now. Councilmember Snyder. Oops, sorry, wrong button.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did attend the past Climate Action Steering Committee meeting. It's the alternate, the Councilmember Swarthup, and I assume she'll mention more about that when she has her report. And I will be attending this Thursday's Public Works Committee meeting, along with Councilmembers Swarthup and Althouser. I also continue to work on my many volunteer projects throughout the city, and I will also be attending several nonprofit fundraising events in the upcoming days and weeks. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you. I had no committee meetings past two weeks, and the only meeting I attended was the one that Lieta discussed, the Equity Toolbox meeting, so that we can determine the way ahead for our city. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
So yesterday, I attended the Joint Animal Services Committee meeting. And it was a very short one. We did discuss shelter statistics for February twenty-twenty-three. And then the director of the, of the Animal Services gave his strategic, talked about strategic plan for our five strategic plan, and then talked about how that and what we've achieved pertaining to goals. The main takeaway from the meeting was that the shelter, because of its plumbing issue, is going to be closed temporarily, front office will be closed temporarily for about a week. It's starting from, I believe, next week, so that those plumbing issues can be rectified. Tomorrow in the morning, I have the EDC Transportation Board meeting. And on Thursday, although not necessarily a committee meeting, I am having a, I'm going to be a guest speaker for the Washington Educational Services, which is a union outfit, and I'm told to talk about how my being on the council and why I got on the council. So that'll be interesting. That's on Thursday. So that is me in short.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. My inter-jurisdictional committees have not met since our last council meeting, but the Regional Housing Council is meeting tomorrow, where Councilmember Kathy and I will, will be present. And the three primary topics we'll be discussing are charters for our new advisory boards regarding affordable housing and homelessness. We'll also be receiving a briefing and a presentation on fair housing laws and policies. And we'll also be discussing topics and plans for future RHC meetings and doing a bit of agenda setting. And looking forward to that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Swarthup.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Climate Action Steering Committee meeting on February twenty-seventh. And at that point, we had a, Allison went over the, the results from our, the board retreat that we did have earlier in January. And one of the things that we'll be coming back to, to council with at some point will be a new ILA. So that, look forward to that. And we won't be until after, in June, that we'll be looking at that, doing another ILA. And one of the things that I think I would like to see if we can get on a work session is we had a presentation on the carbon sequestration report that, there's a white paper that TRPC did for the committee. And it's, it's very, very interesting, and I think that the council will be very interested in hearing the results of this study as well. And then on March third, I attended the TRPC, the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting. We received an update from Brittany Kohler, who's with the National League of Cities, talking about the federal transportation funding updates, the money that's coming now through the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And then we had a presentation about the regional transportation plan for the twenty-twenty-two amendment cycle. And then we also had an update on the Climate Steering Committee information. So that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you very much. All right. So that does bring us to other business. So Councilmember Kathy, did you want to bring up your items?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. And the reason I want to bring this up at council because we talked about it at a council meeting about how we wanted to handle our suggestions, or I'm not sure how, I think it was because Administrator Don brought up about the length of the consent agenda, and then we got into talking about it and things on it. And I am, I'm a little bit disturbed by it. And, you know, I wanted to talk about it, and I find it interesting that tonight is the night that I am talking about it. And it's following us getting response in a couple of long letters about two of the items on the consent agenda for February twenty-first that bothered me. I was not present at the meeting. And had I been, I would have pulled these things. But I, I think that I want to say that we need to reconsider having things go through committees or however we want to handle it, and I want to speak to both of those things. One was the twelve-year exemption for the tax exemption, twelve years. We've never had a twelve-year one before, and I think that that merits some Congress. And um I think that that merits some conversation just again about that in light of housing and everything that's going on. And um also that never did come that I can find. And I've been present, I think, at all the meetings. It did not come through general government. And that's where in the past um these have come. And this was new. I know it was not about us speaking about the whole program of uh tax exempt things to attract developers that we've put into our toolbox that everyone knows I object to in general. I know that this was not to revisit that. This was, we voted just to say, okay, to the twelve year exemption for um the project. And I thought that we should uh talk about that. That should have come up. And we should have let the community know that we were doing a a twelve year tax exemption. And I I was disturbed again to read about this program that we have in our city, uh especially during this time of housing and people struggling to stay in their homes and pay their taxes and pay their, you know, just live and stay in their homes, that we are giving tax exemptions to people who are perfectly able to pay their taxes. And the report says, and the city doesn't lose any money. Well, how is that? That's because you put it on the backs of the people who are still paying their property tax. And I think that this council needs to think about that in light of of the struggles of housing right now and and so forth. And maybe revisit this as 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 a way that we want to attract um, you know, people who are able to pay their taxes. And these developers are certainly able to pay their property taxes or put them into the rent of their um, you know, units that they're building. So and that's part of the reason why we received that letter. And I also have received some calls because of course people know that I I don't happen to agree with this city um decision here. And it and it was on the consent calendar. So there was uh so anyway, I don't think it belonged there. The other thing I don't think that belonged on the consent agenda was the logo. And um I retraced how we talked about the logo. The first time we talked about it was um was in October, October twelfth, at a general government committee meeting. There was not um, you know, all just wonderful, we like this this way. We talked a lot about it. And um um my council mates on that committee had comments and different things about it. And um and uh so then it um it came back to um the council on the seventh of November. And um it it was a work session. And uh there there was some change to it. And um the point I'm trying to make is, and it was three weeks after we saw this at council, the whole council made some comments, wanted some changes, wanted some ideas and so forth. We never saw it or heard anything about it and for three months. And it ends up on the on the consent calendar. And um not everybody likes it. And there was no chance to say anything about it. And my concern is that this kind of a big decision being made with without, I feel, the adequate council input and count and from the commit um community, from the historical community, after over fifty, over close to fifty years of the previous one, I think we did, we did a disservice to our leadership and to the, you know, honoring the community in how we handle this. And I'm I'm uh I'm not only not happy about it, I was embarrassed as people called me about it. And um and so we as council didn't have any input into it unless we were doing it one by one, some way, somewhere to whoever for three months. And it was on the consent calendar. Now, I don't know who decides exactly who goes on, what goes on consent, but I think we need to rethink it and and think about these things just, it's interesting that those two things were two things we got strong written response about after we um after we passed the consent agenda. And so I wanted to, I wanted to comment about those and I appreciate the time um the time to do that. And the other thing I wanted to ask is, since Safe Place is not one of our designated charities, I'm trying to remember how you become a designated charity. And I didn't know that they were not. I thought over the past years, we'd done some things um with and for them. And so we don't need to talk about that tonight and answer it, but I'd like to know how to do that. In the meantime, I'm going to uh take Administrator Dome's suggestion and bring this up here and say some of the top things that Safe Place, if you want to make a donation, these are some of the things they need. They need towels, they need blankets, they need sheets. They could use gift cards for gas or for groceries and feminine hygiene products. So any of those things that you could contribute to Safe Place would be um that'd be great. And we can talk about the designated uh the designated thing later. So thank you for the time and for your and your indulgence on those things. I do want to do one more thing. I want to say I'm going to start the chain of telling stories as a woman during Women's History Month and say that um fifty years ago, almost been fifty years, forty nine, fifty years, I marched in the streets for Roe versus Wade. I now have no autonomy over my own body. And women's health care is suffering, all health care is suffering. And women are being targeted over and over and over again in in our the quote democratic uh society. And I'm very concerned currently about what's going on. And I'm very concerned about the young women out there and the women coming up that are here in our community and our schools. We're losing our rights, women. We are losing our rights as individuals and to make decisions about our own bodies and health care. And it is abhorrent. And whatever it is you feel about abortion, that's one thing. This is about health care. Abortion is one of the things, but it's it's health care for women and it also impacts men. And so um I'm just throwing that out to say, you know, uh my history tells me to keep marching and to keep talking and to keep working toward the things that make us a more fair and just and equitable uh community and society. So um find out where you can make your voice heard or do what you want to do with the groups that you work with. But uh stay alert, stay alert. So thank you.
Great. Um one thing I might I might want to mention, uh Councilmember Kathy. Uh on February fourteenth, it wasn't three months, it was the work session before we voted on it on the consent agenda item that uh Ann Cook did the presentation of the new logo. So it and people did, and council members did make comment on it on the work session. Uh so we did hire a professional. And uh again, it's uh there's not going to be a way of pleasing everyone. Uh but the main elements that was agreed to were represented in the new logo that was designed by a professional and was presented to council members on February fourteenth. So um and Councilmember Althouser, did you have something? And then I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson.
Yeah, I just, you Councilmember Kathy, I I know you know this because you read the minutes as diligently as we all do. But if there are folks at home who may have not seen the minutes from February twenty first, the one thing I do want to point out about that meeting is after the consent agenda was approved, I did make a brief sort of comment about how I do think it would be a good idea for us as a committee, as the general government committee, to add the eight year and twelve year exemption to the a future general government committee meeting agenda so we can take a look at the effectiveness of those programs so far. Um it was twenty seventeen when we passed those. And I think we all know that the housing market today looks a lot different than it did at that point in time. So kind of taking a holistic look at where we are and whether we're achieving those goals, I think makes a lot of sense. So I I I don't think that's been scheduled yet for a future meeting. But Councilmember Kathy, just I I I just want you to know and the public to know that that is something that's going to be on a future agenda meeting for the general government committee.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Althouser. And I remember that. And I I don't know if that was heard, um you know, during that time that we were going to do that. One of the people I talked to, I know, uh didn't hear that. And so um what it, one of the reasons I'm bringing it up tonight is to, in a way, reconfirm. I'm sorry, I should have said, you know, that that was, that you brought that up at the meeting. I apologize. And but I'm very happy about it.
Right. Councilmember Jefferson, did you have something?
Yes, I did, yes, I did. This is about the uh move from consent to consideration issue. Uh I know Lieta brought it up before. And um John, I have full faith and trust and confidence in your leadership, you know that. I would love to extend you involuntarily for two more years, but I can't. So my request is, if you can, can we, can we relook that for your incoming person that's coming in so that we can start hammer her off on the right foot and just set the standards? And then once we have that full faith and confidence in them, then they can go ahead and do that routine thing. Can we do that?
Oh, yeah.
Angela, could Angela, could you restate that and speak directly into your microphone? It's not.
Yes.
Bring very well there. Oh, wow, thank you.
Yes, this is um the move from cons- from consent to consideration issue. I know Lieta brought it up previously. And so did you? And I just asked John to involuntarily extend for two more years. We will not let him retire. But no, in in all um honesty, just with with his incoming um replacement, if he can just dial it back a little bit and, you know, take things from the beginning and let's set the standard on how it should be. And then if we have full faith in their leadership and confidence, and then we can give them the leeway to say, okay, this is minor, this is a little bit major. Just to to ask for that. And John diligently said, yes, no issues with that. Go ahead, Lieta.
Sorry. Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Going with Joan and Angela, this is a great time with the transition of staff leaving Tom Water. Um still bitter about that and probably will always be bitter about that. But a lot of the stuff that's on consent comes from our committees, right? Public Works, General Government, Public Health and Safety. So that's another reminder is a lot of that is the direction from those committees of whether it goes to consent or not. And always the reminder, like Joan, she was unavailable for the meeting, right? She would have pulled those two. We all have that ability to pull an item, right? We get it in an advanced time enough to be able to pull it. So these are all valid comments and there's multiple ways to work with this. And there's multiple players that are adding to these elements. So it's yes, yes, yes. So this is a continuous work, right? And we all have our different styles and we still have a new mayor. We're going to have a new city administrator. So all of this to say like, this is all valid. And I appreciate us being able to have this conversation, to be mindful of these elements and the personal passion of some of our council members on certain topics. So we could also support our other councilmates, knowing that they might want to talk more about this. We can support them in those endeavors as well and make that space. So thank you, Mayor.
It it just needs to come to committee, though, uh uh, don't you think? I mean, isn't that kind of where the pickup can can happen? I mean, it it, you know, I mean, remember, we talked about if something has been to a committee and it does end up on on um consent and it gets pulled, there's somebody there also that can speak to it. Or if it goes to committee, committee makes a decision whether to put it on consent, send it to work session, put it on the council, whatever. So I think that our committee thing is is really important for us. And and we're we're also the ones out there hearing things about this. So, yeah, I I I think that we need to use the tools we have, yeah. Now, I didn't quite understand Angela wants to wait on something. I I'm, I don't, I, it's not the, it's not the sound, Angela. I think it's just my mind is not catching what you're, what you're asking. You're asking for us to wait until our new person gets up to speed?
No, just just to set the standards and do it by procedures, the right, the correct way when for the incoming for the changeover, just so they can see what the standard is. So just take it slow.
Well, I'm not excited about that, uh but.
Me either.
Yeah, but so it brings up a topic we don't want to talk about. But um I I I don't think that there's a standard we're trying to change. I mean, you know, uh staff understands this and they know what what things were just check the box things that we agreed were okay and other things that need to go elsewhere or whatever. And we certainly do. And if we're alert to um, you know, where things are on the agenda, I think we could, we could step into a new rhythm here of some kind. I don't, I I don't know. But I I don't, I I don't want to wait because I don't want to wait. And the other thing is, I don't want to put this on somebody new. I think we can be doing our our business and and they can take and either figure out how we do our business or we can help them.
Right.
Anyway, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, let's be careful about waiting.
Councilmember Althouser, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, I I just, just to address your your point, Councilmember Kathy, I I think the reason why those two items did not go through the general government committee is because those two items are essentially the functions of policies that we've already passed as a council. So essentially, state law requires a council sign off of whenever those are utilized. But since those items are already passed by the council, you know, I I didn't really see an issue with moving those forward. That said, now that, you know, you've sort of made this statement that that's a concerning part of transparency for you, I I think that if we do have future ones, that we can request that staff bring those up at general government committee. And I think we're happy to host those conversations moving forward to have an additional uh supplemental degree of transparency for those conversations.
Yeah, some of those don't need to come to us, Michael, if they don't, if it's not a city council vote. But, you know, to, we had to vote on the complete um, you know, request for twelve year exemption. They 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 can't complete that without us voting, correct, as a council?
Right, which is, you know, it's, I I guess I was sort of looking at it as similar to where the mayor signs a contract extension, for instance, or something that's pretty similar to that. We still have to approve all of those actions as well because they're based on previous policies that we've all addressed in past as a council. But to to your point, you know, I I think there's nothing wrong with additional transparency and that having discussion of those things at the meetings makes, I think that's fine.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
I'll go to Councilmember Agabi and then Councilmember Snyder.
So speaking to the twelve year extension, that was a part of discourse before I got here. And when I came up to um to a vote, I agreed to that because it was my understanding that was discussed and put forward to the general council. But I remember that during a public testimony, there was a a citizen who uh gave testimony in opposition to the vote I were about to take. And after we had the vote, I got a call from uh my consultant who acted as my um treasurer that somebody had called them to ask about a a contribution that I received in twenty twenty one. And I said, well, uh that contribution, if I receive that as a check, that was disclosed to a PDC. So she said, yes, 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 that contribution came from my Thurston County, really does. And this person was asking why I received that money. So if I am putting one on one together, I am a, I am, I suppose my vote for uh that extension is why that digging was. is why that digging was happening. So I'm saying this for the record, that, that discussion was made before I got here. And according to what was being said tonight, that should have gone to general government, but that did not. I have no way to, I mean, I, I guess I could have pulled it, but I did not because it was my understanding that that would have gone through the normal process before it came for discussion. So whoever is listening tonight should note that the $500 that I got as contribution did not influence my vote for that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, point of order, are, we're not supposed to talk about campaigns on the dais, correct?
Well, it has to do with, it has to do with the vote that was taken at, at our last city, city council meeting.
So why, why don't I say this? There is a lot of things that happen, so that we can probably revisit this and, and educate and inform new council members on how we got here. 2017, this was a policy that we did to, to encourage more affordable housing. And there was a multiple, multiple steps and there's many other things. So we can re-educate and we can re-inform individuals and as if council members want to address this in the future. But as well as, for instance, the, the construction on Capital and Trosper. 10 years ago, we started work on that, designing that, getting grants for that. And sometimes people are not aware of these things actually happening until the shovel hits the ground or the first person comes through that takes advantage of the, the things and policies that we have put in place, sometimes a decade before. So I think that, again, any item can be pulled off the consent agenda item if needed or if anyone has questions. There is a lot of longstanding policies and procedures and requirements that we do as a council and as a city. All of those are discussed. So, you know, and we can revisit those if, if we need to get more information on that. So again, there's a multitude of things that the city does that's been passed by previous councils and on the books that everyone can take advantage of if this fits into their program, project or whatever. But it's very clear rules written regarding that. So with that, I'm going to move to Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question and I need clarification. And I guess it's directed maybe to Councilmember Althouser. So you mentioned, somebody mentioned in 2017, this was passed and therefore it didn't need to go through general government. So if the laws were already in the books and we put it on the consent calendar for us to approve it, what, my vision is, we didn't have to because it was already law anyway. So why did we even have it on the consent form calendar to begin with?
Yeah, thanks for that opportunity to clarify. So, so state law requires that, like, state law allows us to create these kinds of tax exemptions in the first place. And then it also requires that whenever there's an applicant that wants to utilize it, that the council affirm that. So the mayor does not have the power to just enter into all sorts of tax exemptions across the city. That's a check and balance piece. And to follow up on, on your statement, Councilmember Agabi, we, we are not required to let these things at the committee level. So I, I don't think that proper procedure was not followed. But I agree with you and with Councilmember Kathy that there's no problem with us hosting those conversations at the committee level. And I think we can do that moving forward. I think, you know, we're happy to do that. It's like, you know, transparency is, is great. We can have additional layers of transparency all that we want to.
Thank you.
Process moving forward.
And Michael, do I have it right, what you said before? We also can revisit the whole 2017 thing. I mean, things are on the books, you know, policies and whatever. And they change because the world changes, like you said before. And so it's not just talking about the 12-year exemption. It's talking about the program that we, that, that we adopted. And we did it in two things. In 17, we did, we did the whole, you know, program with an eight-year exemption. And then two years later in 19 is when we added the 12 years. And so this is the first 12-year that we've had. And so anyway, yeah, I, I think that you're, I just want to reiterate what, what you said because I think it's, it's good. We can, we can revisit and, and see if these things still fit, though these many years later.
Yep. All right. Any other business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn since I'm the one who kept everybody here for.
All right. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.